Good afternoon. I'd like to welcome you to the Cedar Rapids Community School Board Education Meeting. Today is Monday, February 24, 2020. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I move that the agenda of Monday, February 24, 2020, Board of Education meeting be approved as set forth and that each item is considered ready for discussion and/or action.
Is there a second?
A second.
This requires a roll call.
Director Tominski.
Aye.
Director Anhalt.
Aye.
Director Borchardine.
Aye.
Director Merschrock.
Aye.
Director Newman.
Aye.
Director Garlock.
Aye.
President Humbles.
Aye. Next, we'll move to a public hearing for the permanent easement at Washington High School. The Interstate Power and Light Company is requesting a permanent utility easement which includes a 10-foot strip of land containing approximately 10,280 square feet. Board Secretary, have we received any correspondence?
We have received no correspondence regarding this public hearing.
At this time, the floor will be open to anyone that would like to address the board regarding the hearing. Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Next, we'll move to our superintendent's report.
Very good. Thank you, President Humbles, and good evening, everyone. We have some great things to celebrate this week, starting off with the Iowa Nurse of the Year. That's right, it's our very own Cindy Fagan. Congratulations to her. We would like to start out this evening with really that exciting news. Our district's very own Cindy Fagan has been named the 2020 Iowa School Nurse of the Year by the Iowa School Nurse Organization. Cindy works at Hiawatha and Viola Gibson Elementary Schools. From this statement is from the Iowa School Nurse Organization. Cindy's accomplishments and dedication to the profession of school nursing made her a very deserving candidate. You should be very proud of the impression and contributions she has made for the students in your community. Cindy will be presented her award at the Spring Iowa School Nursing Organization Conference on April 16 through the 17. Cindy will also be honored at the 2020 National Association of School Nurses Annual Conference in Las Vegas to be held June 30 through July 3 with an Excellent in School Nursing Award. Cedar Rapids Community School District is very fortunate to have Cindy on our team. She's a dedicated professional who has impacted the students and our community in so many ways. Just to note, our nurses do so much more than just medical care. They provide support, counseling, just that initial screening if a kiddo just isn't feeling good that day. They're usually the ones who get to the bottom of it. So, thank you so much to all of our nurses, but specifically, congratulations to Cindy. So proud of her. Harding Future City to Nationals. Congratulations to Harding Middle Schools Future City Team for winning the national award for Best Future City Project Management Plan. The eighth graders, along with their PAC teacher Shannon, were in Washington DC last week taking part in the Future City National Competition. The Harding team created a city and had already completed against 34 teams from across the state. Future City's competition is an annual group program that Cedar Rapids programs for academic and creative talented students participate at the local, regional, and sometimes national level. Students compete in five deliverables. They have a virtual city design. They have a 1,500 work essay, Word essay, a scale model built from recyclable materials, a project plan, and a presentation to the judges, certainly encompassing all of our profile of graduate competencies. It's a great opportunity for our students, and we wish Harding's students the very best of luck in the finals in Washington DC. So, their theme for the 2019-20 year is clean water. And to tap into tomorrow, the teams are going to choose a threat to their city. Well, we know about this, don't we? A threat to their city's water supply and designed a resilient system to maintain a reliable supply of clean drinking water. So, best to Harding's Future City team. And then finally, our Iowa Teacher of the Year is George Anderson, and George was recently at the National Teacher of the Year Conference, which was at Google. So, George, as well as other Teachers of the Year from across the country, met as a cohort on the Google campus in Sunnyvale, California last week. And the event was cosponsored by the Council of Chief State School Officers and was an opportunity to get together and focus on the developing skills and knowledge as teacher leaders and innovative practices in education. So, there's a picture of George, as well as fellow Teachers of the Year from across the nation, and he'll bring that learning back to our district. And then finally, the drum roll has opened. Kindergarten registration, here they come. So, this morning, online registration opened for kindergarten students wanting to enroll in the 2020-21 school year. This begins the registration season for us, and we certainly welcome all of our new families. This is the heartbeat of what we do, and just any way that we can support newcomers and our families, please do. There's information on our website, but you can also call the district office, and we'll be glad to support you in the enrollment, as well as you can go to your local school, and they'll support you too. So, please do. You can access that information online, or you can come right here to the district, and we'll help you get started. So, welcome to our kindergarteners coming up 2021.
Yes. And also, it's great to see Harding. We should applaud them too, our students. We have amazing students. Is that it?
That's it.
Do we have any board reports?
Legislative update for the public and for the board. I think you've seen the output we've seen from UEN. During a conference call that I sat in on the Iowa School Board Association last week, heard from the IASB lobbyists that a little different take than what we've had in recent years. They're saying that, don't push legislators for an early settlement. It's been a concern that they hold to their 30 days after the start of legislation to have SSA finalized. And what we're saying is, don't put pressure on legislators to meet that deadline, which has already gone past, but to rush into it, we'd rather have the highest SSA that we can. As you know, the Senate has come out with a 2.1 SSA, and the House has moved it up to 2.5, which is the governor's recommendation. So, we're pushing for, Iowa School Board Association is pushing for the 2.5, the higher amount. UEN, as you know, we had set an SSA level of 3.75. And what's interesting is that there is the fiscal capacity to be able to do that higher number. It would reduce the taxpayer tax relief fund down to 1.199 million from 249 million. But, that's a fund that will be reimbursed through the next budget year. So, certainly, if they have the capacity to be able to do it. The problem is, the will to be able to do it is something else. Other things happening are, the legislation in both the House and the Senate has heard from school districts and teachers about student behaviors. And both the Senate and the House have bills or companion bills dealing with it. From my point of view, the best I can say is, well, they're recognizing the problem, but what they're dealing is a lot of verbiage and unfortunately, not a lot of money to it. The Senate has funding for therapeutic classrooms using a grant program, which is a very small amount of money to begin with in the pool, and then you'd have to apply and ask for a grant. And again, a grant is limited in funding, and it doesn't serve as long-term. So, the positive thing is, they're talking about, they recognize that they have a problem. Now, what we have to do is find some long-term commitments to actually really address it. So, those bills are the Senate's Study Bill 3080 and House Study Bill 598. And we have, in fact, on the Ed Subcommittee, we have one of our own educators, Molly Donahue, sits on that committee. And so, she's a behavioral specialist in the district, so can really add some good input, hopefully, into the committee. So, those are things to keep track of. We'll see what happens.
Thank you for the update. Any other board reports? Next, we'll move on to communications, delegations, and petitions. And I'd like to remind those that request to address the board when your name is called, to step to the podium and give us your name and address. And you will be given five minutes. And Board Secretary Day will be our timer. And additionally, in order to abide by the open meeting laws, I'd like to remind the public that there will be no dialogue between the board members and public during this time, except to clarify the nature of the questions or comments from the individuals. So, the first one is Tanya Johnson.
3816 Riverside Drive, Northeast Cedar Rapids. I am here today to talk to you as CREA President, and I want to share with you something cool that I got to do a couple weeks ago. I was able to go and be a part of a NEA Leaders for Just Schools training, and I have given you all the little pamphlet that you can kind of look through a little bit. This is a racial social justice curriculum that is being put together by teachers, NEA members across the United States. Last year, at the same time, I was able to be a part of year one of the training. That's a four-day training that we squeezed into three days. And then in the summer, we were able to be facilitators of that training for other teachers in an actual four-day training session. And now, this is going on to a year two, and there's actually going to be three years of it. What I think is totally amazing about this is that it puts together some conversations that you can have either in the full three to four days, or you can do them in little snippets. So, we've done a couple of activities at our association rep meetings, just in maybe a 30-minute or 45-minute block. But, what I am hoping to, and we've talked with Superintendent's Cabinet Noreen and Rod Dooley about how we can put this out possibly in our OLL leadership, and then discuss if it's something that we can do even broader. When I speak about the racial social justice, we've done some of the IDI work here, the intercultural development work, and that's been very well-received, but very individual-based. So, how am I going to do this? How do I look at things? And this curriculum is really about how we act in our classrooms with our students, and how our students see us, and especially in our district where we really have a hard time of having our students being able to have a teacher that looks like them. And so anyway, so I'm just so excited about it. I'd love to talk to any of you about it individually. The other thing that I think is very, very interesting about this, NEA is using the funding for this from the ESSA work. So, under their ed policy, education policy, which is the ESSA, which is the education, the, thank you, thank you, Every Student Succeeds Act. Thank you. Too many acronyms, as usual. And so, along with that, they're talking about what we need to give our schools in order to get all of our schools at the best, for the building, for the teachers, for parent communication, whatever that is, and that we don't have some buildings that are less than another building, and having those buildings being buildings that don't have student input or family input. One of the things that we have is the Opportunity Audit, and this is also an NEA piece put together, but it goes through different sections of actually your school. So, like one criteria, all students have access to capable qualified educators, and then it has different elements under that. And so, you can really, really get an in-depth look at your district, our district, and where we are, if we're emerging, improving, or flourishing in those certain areas, and then it'll give us a chance to talk about what we need to work on more. So, thank you for the time to share, and I'm sure I'll talk about this a little bit later, too. Thanks.
Thank you.
President Humbles. Without getting in a dialogue, would this be something that we could have, just a presentation more in-depth on the program, do you think, from just the school board session?
I'm sure we can.
If you think so. Go to the, on your meeting evaluation form, we can take that under consideration.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Rainey Miller.
All right. Rainey Miller, 2641 Rainier Court, Northeast. I'm going to share with you a little bit about the listening session that I went to. At the listening session I attended, staff from four to five schools expressed concerns over behavior and safety in our classrooms. Everyone in attendance felt students and staff should feel safe when they are at school. Unfortunately, staff reported an increase of explosive and troubling behavior that disrupts instruction and, more importantly, causes staff and students to feel unsafe. Hitting or kicking staff, throwing materials, eloping from the classroom, screaming, running around the room during instruction, climbing on top of furniture, upending tables, and destroying the school and/or teacher's materials were among the issues staff experienced on a regular basis. Room clears, which used to be rare, have become a more common occurrence, happening monthly, weekly, or in some places even daily. Often, staff find themselves in situations they haven't been trained to handle. We receive a two-hour professional development once a year on how to work with these situations, discussing how to diffuse the concerning behavior. As a staff, we use this training to the best of our ability. We also receive coaching from our IDss, and we take data. This data is to be used to move students along their tier system that we have established as a district. Some staff expressed frustration with some buildings that have a clean slate policy, that after data has been taken all year long to move students along the tier system, at the beginning of the next school year, the old data is ignored, and only new data from that current school year is considered. This is forcing staff to take everything back to tier one and have to spend the year again getting up to a tier three plan. And then sometimes, they never actually reach getting a full plan. There are protocols that are put into place for students, but at times, the building, the needs in a building are so great, there are not enough trained staff to respond to de-escalate situations. Schools find it difficult to free staff to work on more proactive methods by teaching behavior skills, managing tier systems, but instead find themselves in a constant cycle of reaction to unstable and/or drastically disruptive situations. Staff felt we do not have the correct people in appropriate amounts in the correct positions to create a proactive situation in our schools. When discussing correct positions, we found schools have uneven opportunities for resources, such as engagement specialists, additional administrators, additional counselors, or therapy services from community resources. Currently, there is no set method for a school to apply for these additional staff members or services on a full or part-time basis. These inconsistencies can cause concern as students move around the district due to a family choice or district decision. An example at our session was of an ELL student, English Language Learners, if you don't know the alphabet soup. At his elementary last year, he received weekly services from Tanager at a school. However, when the last reorganization of the English Language Learner Program, he was transferred back to his home school. However, that school did not have access to Tanager services for support. Therefore, that student was no longer allowed to access any services to continue to get the help he needed. As a district, I know we are working to do the best for kids. We care, accept, love all kids that are put in our charge daily, every student future-ready, no matter what challenges the student or us as adults face. It is this care and the thought of every student that causes us to discuss these issues. Thank you for providing the opportunity for staff to share, and thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. Next, we have Kelly McMahon.
Good evening. My name is Kelly McMahon, and I live at 5508 Dostal Drive Southwest, Cedar Rapids, Iowa 52404. In Debbie Diller's book, Spaces and Places, Diller recommends the first six to eight weeks in an early childhood classroom, which includes grades pre-K through three, should be spent establishing and practicing procedures, expectations, and developing a classroom community. The Iowa Reading Research Center recommends implementing a 21-day phase-in model where you spend the first 21 days establishing and practicing routines, procedures, and expectations for small group instruction. This fall at Hoover Elementary School, we had the privilege of implementing the 21-day phase-in model for reading instruction in our kindergarten classrooms. We began the first three weeks of school focused on teaching every letter, every sound, every day. We explicitly taught and practiced key phonological awareness skills such as rhyming, alliteration, and isolating initial sounds. We worked on explicitly teaching and practicing whole group and small group routines, procedures, and expectations. So, once we began our formal small group instruction, we would have fewer interruptions. We also were able to devote more time at the beginning of school year, establishing a community and playing games that reinforce the development of key executive functioning skills as we learn the names of our classmates and their likes and dislikes. These skills included taking turns, sharing, which obviously is taking turns, but sharing materials, using iMessages to solve a problem, and how to get the attention of someone appropriately. As a class, I am progress monitoring fewer kids than I have every, oh my gosh, sorry. As a class, I am progress monitoring fewer kids than I have progress monitored weekly for the past four years. Typically, I am progress monitoring all but three to four students. I currently only am progress monitoring 12 students instead of the typical 19 to 20 students in previous years, because we have spent that time teaching every letter, every sound, every day, and those key early phonological awareness skills. As a class, we are using iMessages to solve our problems without needing any adult support, and we take turns while playing and using our words to talk out our problems. I am glad to hear that implementing a 21-day phase-in model for reading is one of the strategies that has come out of these listening sessions. This is a step in the right direction to ensure our kindergarten programs are structured in a developmentally appropriate manner. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll move to administration. We have a resolution to schedule a public hearing on March 9 for school infrastructure, sales service, and use of tax revenue refunding bonds. Dave?
We need to go back, we need to go back to the consent agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Dave. I'm sorry. And we have a, what do we do with this person that has a?
Your call.
I'm going to be brief.
Is it?
Keith Hammer.
Okay, I'm sorry, I couldn't.
It's okay. It's my handwriting.
Okay.
Engineer.
Sorry.
No problem. So, Keith Hammer. I live at 515 Forest Drive, and I'm just up here, actually, to kind of welcome new board members. This is the first session that I've been to, basically, the first session I've been to live, watched remotely. But, wanted to get up here real quick, because I know some things are coming down the pipe, that, especially for the new board members, I want to kind of give you some past feedback from the old board, some of the members who have gone, in terms of dealing with the facilities master plan. So, I know that coming up here shortly, there's going to be a vote about, or a discussion and a vote about funding sources for Jackson and starting on it. I know for the previous board, there was discussion about having a pause in between building, all right? And at a point in time when we're 25% over budget on a $20 million project, it seems to me premature to be talking about funding for the next school when we're still working on the first one. And we're still working on the first one, for one thing, and we don't know how the first one is going to go. So, I'm basically just coming up here and asking, one other thing, too, was, in those discussions, as we went through the facilities master plan, it was talked about, we're not going to go out for a bond, SAVE is going to pay for this. I think at a 25% overrun for first school, it's pretty clear that that's not going to happen. And I hope, when that comes to pass, that you all will support a public vote on that, to make sure that the public is behind this, okay? I think that's a fair request. So, coming in new, coming in fresh for the new members, I think it's good to know, probably most of you are aware of some of that, but I think it's good to just bring that up and ask that you challenge your other board members, ask about that, get their feedback on it, and do what's right for our kids, for our public, and for the city of Cedar Rapids. So, that's it.
Thank you. Get focused again. I'm sorry. We are going to move to the consent agenda. Are there any items that a board member would like to pull for comment, questions, or a separate vote?
I have a question on BA 20265. It's the bus purchase. Question is, will these buses then have seat belts because of a new legislative, I think, bill that was passed?
He did a thumbs up.
Yes, they will.
Good enough, we'll be implying. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda, and that is, and we have the personnel report in there, too?
So, move.
Is there a second?
A second.
This is a roll call vote.
Director Anhalt.
Aye.
Director Borchardine.
Aye.
Director Merschrock.
Aye.
Director Newman.
Aye.
Director Garlock.
Aye.
Director Tominski.
Aye.
President Humbles.
Aye. Now, next, we'll move to administration. We have a resolution to schedule a public hearing on March 9 for school infrastructure, sales service, and use of tax revenue refunding bonds. Dave?
Yeah, this is the resolution as required by law to move forward with issuance of any SAVE bonds, or it also requires any refinancing bonds to hold a public hearing before you move forward. And so, this is that first step, and so, to have the board set the public hearing, which we'd like to move forward with March 9 for that.
So, what you had just said is that we're looking at, I mean, it's state, it's required by the state that we have a public hearing, and that's what we're voting on, to have a public hearing on March 9.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions from the board?
One question. Why are we, if we're not issuing the bond-
One question, why are we, if we're not issuing the bonds until February of next year, is there any reason to do it at this time, almost a year in advance?
One of the reasons why we're looking at moving forward to doing this right now is that it would be, one of the things, first step we have to do is, we have to enter into a contract with the architect for the design of it. And I would like to have the public hearing prior to us entering a contract because that will actually play into how the contract is written. Because if the contract is written in such a way that says we're going to move forward and do the bidding and all of that after design, well, if the, if we're gonna have a public hearing, we would like to put some language in the contract that allows for an out to stop the process from going further. If we are gonna have a public hearing, that we need to have some additional language in there that allows for that to happen.
So, and just, the contract with the architect, is the architect, that cost included in the 25 million, or?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I don't have any more questions, but.
Do we have a motion, are any, there any other questions?
I'd like to just say, I don't think, going to the comment that we just heard, as new board members, we really haven't had any discussion of the facilities' master plan in the three, four months that we've been on here, at least public discussion. And so, I think it would be prudent, I don't know if we could have a work session to talk about ideas regarding questions the public might have, or that we might have ourselves, just an informal way to have a discussion as a board about those things. Because whatever form our discussion would take, this process, if we go forward with this here, go forward to issue bonds in the future, the end result is, we wanna build a new school, build another new school, and then close a school in the future. And if we're going to take that step, I live near a school, I know if you were closing down my school, I would like the members of the board, you know, who haven't had their opinion heard on this, you know, since it was passed under a previous board, to have their opinions out in the public, kind of have, you know, something on record before the public hearing, you know, I understand that could happen at the public hearing, but every public hearing that we've had since, you know, I've joined this board is, we're having a public hearing, there's no comments, it's passed with no discussion from the rest, from the board. And so, I think the board should have some sort of discussion amongst ourselves in whatever form that might take before moving forward on this. So, I don't know if we could schedule a work session for the 9th of March?
If you can do this, put that on your meeting, your meeting evaluation for suggestions.
I'm saying, I will not vote for this, and I don't think anyone should do this before we have that discussion, and then we should then take a vote on this in the future, is my.
I understand what you're saying, but what we are voting on tonight is to have a public hearing on March the 9th. I understand what you're saying.
I'm urging the rest of the board to not vote to have the public hearing until we take another step.
Proceed with the vote.
Okay, we can, so, do we have a motion, so, would that be a roll call?
If you have a motion in a second, yes.
Do we have a motion to approve the resolution as presented?
So, moved.
This is a roll call?
Do we have a second?
Oh, second.
A second.
We have a roll call?
Good. Director Borchardine?
Aye.
Director Merschrock?
No.
Director Newman?
Aye.
Director Garlock?
Aye.
Director Tominski?
Aye.
Director Anholt?
Aye.
President Humble's?
Next, we will move to learning and leadership. We have a presentation. It's an overview of the listening sessions that were facilitated by Wendy Parker and Tanya Johnson. The presentation directly ties to all four focus areas of our strategic plan. And I'll turn this presentation over to Wendy and Tanya. Before you begin, could you please introduce yourself and include your title?
Yes, I will. Wendy Parker, Executive Director for Special Services.
Tanya Johnson, Ciaria President.
Okay, give you a little bit of an overview about what happened. So, we had listening sessions specifically around the topic of staff safety. We had a conversation with the association, and this is a conversation that's been going on nationally, in our state, on Facebook. You know, it's one of those things of, we really need to have this conversation together because the conversation is, is already happening. So, we had 19 listening sessions that included teachers and paras, engagement specialists, counselors, administrators. We also provided an opportunity for staff to participate online, so there was the same questions were online. We had about 400 staff attended the listening sessions, and we had over 100 staff that participated online, so we felt like we got really good input in that way. Since then, we have, our last listening session was in January, and then we've met three times between the district and association group of, first of all, just going through all of the stuff that we heard and trying to get through all that stuff and think about, okay, what were the priorities? We'll continue to meet, we have been communicating with staff about this. That was one of the commitments we made to them was, you know, transparency, what, what I've heard, we'll put right back out to you. I do want to make mention of, you know, the bravery it took for a lot of people to come and have these conversations. These are not easy conversations to have. Our teachers don't in any way want to come across as, as blaming children, you know, so they're not, they're hard conversations to have, so I really appreciate all the people that participated in because it was extremely helpful to us to have this, to have this feedback.
I would just wanna also say that we, we as an organization of the teachers' union, we felt this was really important to be able to have these, and there was just a little bit of concern when it started of, here's another listening session, you know, do I really need to go, is something really gonna happen? And I feel that Wendy and district admin have really worked hard to follow through on, on making these listening sessions actually something that is, is going to help our students and help our, our staff. One of the things that Wendy just mentioned as well is that we did have some really good conversations every time we finished. It was, it was really nice for Wendy and I to do them together because Wendy could kind of take notes, and I could kind of watch, watch what was being typed up. But, but after each one, we, we each came out with ideas that were like, oh, you know, that seems to be working at that school, I wonder if these other schools know about that. And so, those are some of kind of the, the low, low-hanging fruit that we, we aren't even talking about here in the, in the priorities. So, just to touch briefly on the, some of the priorities that we identified, and this was the group of a couple of association members and a couple of district admin. Targeting supports to kindergarten, particularly at the beginning of the school year, making sure we have professional learning around behavior for administrators, new teachers, special education teachers who are not BF or autism, and intercultural mindset work, increasing the support and professional learning for the BF and behavior focus in autism teachers, strengthening the MTSS for behavior throughout the district, making sure we have mental health, trauma, professional learning for all teachers and paras, increase the transparency around how these resources are allocated to buildings, and then the self-care for staff. And again, these are the priority topics. So, we had, we sent out to staff every single comment that was made in all of these sessions from all of these staff members, and these were the topics that kind of floated to the top and that were mentioned several times across every, every different session. There are other things that were, were mentioned, and we will continue to talk about those pieces individually because some were just focused specifically on certain buildings, but these were the ones that were hopefully gonna help across the district. So, on this slide, you can see I highlighted just a couple of, a couple of the items. We're gonna talk a little deep, more deeply about each one, but the highlighted ones I'll talk about first. So, the targeted supports for kindergarten, particularly at the beginning of the school year, this lends itself to the, the topic that Kelly McMahon was talking about, the 21-day phase-in. That has been, has gone so well at the buildings that have been piloting that this year, that we, we would love that to be something that we could do, you know, like K-2 or K-1. But we know that for right now, maybe just getting that focused on kindergarten and making sure that our kindergartners have 21 days to get the school year started, to build those relationships, to focus on the, every letter, every sound, every day, and, and just start their, their schooling off on the right foot. Obviously, that's a little bit of a passion of mine as well. The other thing, just another quick little thing with that first one is Wendy had talked about some, is it okay if I talk about the special ed?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanna be sure before I put it out there. Talked about our special ed preschool teachers being able to do some of their, their home visits that they generally do during the first couple of weeks of school when they don't have kids, and instead pushing into kindergarten and helping with that transition. So, the preschool students that are coming to kindergarten and helping with that transition. So, that would be another piece that's added on there. And then, down here with the mental health, trauma, professional learning for all teachers and paras, this is something that I think we're really excited about as well. We talked about what, what teachers really need, and in our listening sessions, they didn't really know what they needed. But what we talked about was, if someone is having like heart difficulty, we all learn CPR. And so, maybe this mental health first aid class, which is what we are offering, which we, is what we would like to offer to all of our staff, our teachers first, in some, some opportunities this summer, will give them that little bit of, of knowledge to help them, and then we will build on top of that if we need, need more. And then, the last one is that, that increased transparency around how resources are allocated to buildings. That came up a little bit in Rainey's comments of teachers, buildings, schools, admin, they just, they don't know why they have who they have or why they don't have who they don't have. And so, just being transparent, having our district admin be transparent on why that's happening, who's getting the engagement specialist, who's getting the facilitators, who's getting the behavior techs, and, and why that's happening, and how we can make sure more buildings get those things. And then, I'll let you talk about a couple of others.
And I don't know that I really wanna go into any more detail unless you have questions. So, maybe it's a good time, if you wanna, if there are some questions or comments, then, then I'm not talking about things that you're not really interested in.
I have a question about kindergarten. So, are there, are there kindergarten paras in all of the kindergarten classes?
Halftime, right?
Halftime paras in all kindergarten classes? In all buildings?
Okay.
Well, I wanted to thank you for the presentation and also the teachers that took the time to provide feedback because that is something administration management will look at, and it's nice of that partnership because we do want the best for our teachers and for our students. And I know this is, will be an ongoing process, and so, it's good for us to know and to follow up on that.
Well, and all educators, or many staff members who participated in these sessions, our paraeducators, engagement specialists, all participated, so thank you for making the venue open for all. And, and really providing open ears.
President Humble's, a couple of questions or comments. One, the 21-days-in program. Typically, we have a lot of transition students or students that come in. How do we handle some, the younger students that come in, pass the 21 days or in the middle of the 21 days or whatever? It seems that this is important work for them to be engaged in, in their education.
So, I don't know what the plan is for that, but I can just speak to my own classroom. And when, when you have a student that comes in at the middle of the school year at any time, it's always kind of a catch-up. But my guess would be that you would have, so let's say it's, you know, 30 days in and you're already into your regular, regular lessons, that you would be having your para pull them and giving them additional practice, like that's what I would be doing. And then, when you go into your first fast testing or your first assessment to see where they're at, if at that point, they show that they're not at the level that they should be, then they would be getting that progress, additional progress monitoring. And then, as far, as far as the important part of that 21 days is the relationship building, that, that kind of just, like in a kindergarten classroom, it just happens, you know, they, you bring them in, they get a buddy, and they all gather around that person and kind of bring them along. So, when it's just the one, it's a lot easier than when you have all of them there because when they're all there, they're all a little bit, not a little bit new, they're all new, and they're trying to figure it out. So, does that help?
It, it does.
You can probably talk to Kelly and get more details later.
I, I will. Do we still have the employee assistance program in place to help with students, with teachers and staff, with teachers and paras and, and professional? Three visits, is that?
Yeah, I don't know, Lynda probably has more knowledge, I mean, yes, we do, but Lynda probably has more knowledge.
Yes, actually, we just went to a new vendor who was able to offer a much more robust package for our, our staff. And so, there's a number of, we have an enormous amount of online resources as well as those three visits, so it's a very robust program.
Okay, completely confidential and free.
Completely confidential, and it's a utilization fee, which means it's open to every one of our staff members, and we encourage them to use it. We send out, we've sent out a couple of different postcards to their homes, so we're trying to get the word out as well that that program is available to them completely free.
I know that past experience, you don't get, you don't get the information of the employees itself, but you do get incidences or, or the number of visits.
Counts, aggregates, yep, mm-hmm, correct.
Could you, I don't expect to have it right now, but could you forward what, where we're at with that?
Sure.
What the, the count is?
Yep.
Thank you. Still here. The mental health, the trauma, you know, as you, as you pointed out, this is not just a Cedar Rapids, this is a fairly broad. And we're still, and I think, struggling with what are the, what, what can we do about it, you know? Is there, have you looked at, is there information from other parts of the state, other parts of the nation, some, some, some programs, some things where some people have, have tried some things, have done some things that, that we could use as a resource, you know, going forward? Because I know it's, it's kind of a head-scratching, you know, complex problem.
You know, I'll speak to this. Prior to coming to Cedar Rapids, I was an AEA special ed director, and we actually went on a visit, a group of us, including some department ed people, to go to some other states to look at therapeutic programs, what I call a therapeutic program, chatted the mental health component into it. We have visited a, you know, a program in DuBois, since I've been here, Marshalltown has hooked up with Four Oaks, and so, absolutely, yes, we've been looking, in fact, I just got information from Adam Zimmerman about a therapeutic program down in New Orleans that's, that's showing really great things. You know, the, the frustrating thing from our perspective as, as a school is, we know the importance of increasing these services while around us, things seem to be getting less. I'll put that in my own perspective, they appear to be, to be less, and so, we're trying to constantly kind of play catch-up. We did hire our own mental health therapists this year, three full-time people to work in our off-site programs at Oak, Harrison Connections, and Madison Connections. We do a lot of partnering with, with outside agencies, but we have a lot more that we need to do. Our kids and families have needs that, that are causing a lot of struggles in the classroom that we need a more effective response to. And obviously, if I had the answer to that, I would, you know, be not here. I'd be telling somebody else what to do.
Right.
But, but there is, there is a definite hole in our, in, in our response across the state, and maybe this is across the country, with mental health services for young people and for families. And we are doing the best that we can to constantly try and provide as much as we can at school, but this is something that needs to be recognized as a need, you know, all the way around.
And, and I think from a board standpoint, or... And, and I think from a board standpoint, our bottom line is always can be, what, what do you, what do you need? Are there more resources? And I think obviously, it sounds like it is. I think what would be helpful for us as we start prioritizing our, our expenses and what we need and we start talking with legislators, if we could have some hard numbers of, of what, what is it going to take? The Senate has a study bill on behavior and they have therapeutic classrooms in it. And it sounds, you know, again, bright grants to get it, but it sounds like it's a very expensive proposition to be able to man with a room with someone with the capacity, not just to babysit, but to be able to deal with some of the issues of behavior. So, I guess looking at that and as a, as kind of attached to that is SROs. I believe we could use more SROs. There's a bill in legislation right now that would allow, if it was, if it goes through, would allow us to bump up our instructional support levy beyond what our, what our limit is in order to pay for an additional SRO officer and supporting materials and so on for that person. So, I think that's something we also need to, to follow up. And I'm going to conclude with just last thing is the question, the responses that you received written through the Google Docs, were they, were they done without names attached? Could we, could we see some of those responses? I don't think we've had. I'd like to actually hear or read what, what the staff, the input would be. So.
Director Anhold. We absolutely can and I've provided a copy to President Humble's, but absolutely, we can get you the verbatims.
Thank you. And I'm, thank you so much for your work and your continued work and I'm done.
And just before, before you really ask for that, just know that it's, it's not just the, the 108 that provided input online. It's, it's all the input. So, it's, it's all been aggregated together. And so, it's a long weekend of reading. Just so you know.
It's a lot of pages, but yes.
I'm really interested.
Okay. And we can get copies too.
I have a question. I'm just wondering if there's an opportunity for some intersectionality with support services that we currently have outside of schools to have some shared practice and some common language. So, if we're working with our tanager places and our abbey centers, et cetera, if when this is moving forward, we're kind of developing a plan that we're making sure that, that everyone that's involved in, in helping our students be successful kind of has the same words. So, that, so that when we're talking with our students and when we're using practice, that it's not confusing. We're not suddenly shifting to something else after school or before school. So, there's some consistency there.
Yeah. That's a really good suggestion. You know, I think we put a lot of effort into that. I don't know that in terms of outcome, that we always end up with the same language. We have a ton of communication with our.
Sure.
Our extremely valuable community resources that work in our, in our buildings. But, I, I think that's a, that's a great thing to think about is what is, how do we make sure that we're all on the same page and talk in the same language?
Just a quick comment on that as well. Thank you Wendy and Tanya. They highlighted the MTSS for behavior throughout our district, which is the multi-tiered system of support. Our community partnerships have really adopted that language. And just meeting with a community partner actually on Friday, speaking to that language, speaking to the tier levels of support and how our community partners participate in some of our tier teams at our schools. So, I think we'll see an increasing amount of that. But, also leveraging our community partners, specifically those who are mental health experts, we want to use their expertise with direct services to students and then providing that common language of support. And so, that, just hats off to our agencies who are so willing to work with us and provide that common language. They're really great about adapting to children's needs and they know that kids are with us eight hours a day, five days a week. Tremendous thank yous to them.
I have a question, Tanya. Just to follow up on your 21-day phase in. You said in your perfect world, we could expand that into first and second grade?
Yeah, that would be the perfect world.
Can you talk a little bit about what the impediments to that would be? Is it, is it staffing? Is it then crunching up curriculum?
So, do you want my personal opinion or my CREA hat or? My personal opinion is that we right now have a system that is very academic-based. And, you know, from the time that, when I came out of the classroom, it, it was starting. It was starting before that. But, so it's very academic-based and very like, oh my gosh, we got to get these kids the information that they need. Now, I believe, I feel that if we were to, to slow down a little bit and give our kids that time, the 21 days to focus on a few tight skills, whatever those might be at a first grade or second grade classroom, that, and focus on those relationships, that it's going to help with our behaviors because our kids feel safe in that environment. And then, it's going to help with the academics because, because they feel safe and they have belonging, they are going to be ready to do that learning quicker. So, that's just me.
And I would say the biggest impediment is that coaching piece. So, having, so right now, I think we have four, six classrooms and we've got a couple coaches that are, that are helping those teachers, have helped them the first 21 days. And so, then when we look at 50 classrooms, which would be kindergarten, now you're coaching in 50 classrooms or it's 100 or it's 150. And we know that if we just tell you how to do something and then you go do it, the likeliness of implementation above 5% is very, very low. We know if we coach it, we can get up to that 90% or above. So, not having a large group of people that have done this before, it's a matter of how do you train those folks first in order to support those? So, we did talk about, you know, if we did kindergarten this year and then first grade, you know, the next year, could we sort of phase it in and support it? But, for me, that's the biggest thing is making sure that we have enough coaching support for teachers because they don't need another thing thrown at them and then us walk away and say, you know, good luck, hope that really works for you. We want to be, be there and be able to support it and coach it, so.
And I think the people that have been coaching have been really, have, are awesome, have been doing a great job. But, I also think that some of our kindergarten teachers who have been going through it would be, would be good coaches. Because when you look at our kindergartens across the district, just, just like every classroom, every district across, not every teacher's at the exact same level. And so, some teachers are going to need more coaching than others. And so, if we have our own teachers help with some of that coaching, that can help us scale up quicker.
Do you have a feeling about whether it would be better, if we could expand, if we could expand this 21-day phase in? Would it be better to expand it to more kindergarten classrooms or expand it and follow those groups of kids into first grade and second grade?
Both.
I mean, the hard thing is that when kids, you know, move, we've had that issue with preschool. If we do this in preschool, then all those kids that go to kindergarten will do it in those kindergartens. Well, it's not, it's, it's cleaner, of course, kindergarten and first grade, but we still have a lot of different kids going different places and then, so.
I think that's a.
But, we've talked about that idea.
Yeah, yeah. Well, we didn't talk about the idea of them going from, like whoever we've had it in kindergarten going up to first grade, which I think is a really good idea.
It would make for some interesting data if we could, if we had that cohort to follow, to follow through.
Right.
Our data does tell us that the increase of, of student needs around behavior specifically is at the kindergarten level. We've just seen an increase there. So, I would agree, the and environment is the perfect, the perfect solution. But, I think that's also why we targeted kindergarten to begin with. It's just to make sure that their, their readiness for being in school is there.
And I don't know that we've, we talked about it or that even Kelly mentioned it so much, but it real, there really is data to show that this program is really helping those kiddos. Like their, their scores are, are really popping. So, that's, that's good to hear. Like finally, something that we can say that works.
Okay. So, my background is in science, so when we start talking about data, you know, then I'm going to ask more questions. Are we going to keep data on the kids who are currently in this expanded program? So, we'll, okay, good.
I have a question. But, first of all, thank you for collecting all this information and I am looking forward to that long weekend. So, what you were talking about with coaching resonated with me and really led into my question that I've been thinking about all along is, as you were going through this listening session exercise, did you find common themes or solutions that people brought that came up over and over again or just any brilliant light bulb ideas that came out of it that, that could potentially be explored or that have worked for particular teachers that is worth sharing with other educators?
I would say yes.
With the 21-day thing?
Yeah, the 21-day was one of those. The, the list that we had up there were, were the things that kind of came out more than anything else. And I don't know in the paperwork that you, or in the information that you share, if it has that listing with the numbers next to it?
It, it does.
Okay. So, it'll have the tallies of how many times that, that comment was. So, that will help you see that. I think the, some of the specific things that I maybe talked about were, you know, a certain building was talking about how their, they had a team that was working really closely on tier two or something. So, those, those specific things we haven't talked or shared much else about, but that doesn't mean that it's stopping. Like this isn't the end of this and that's what I keep telling our teachers too. Like this is not the end. This is the beginning of our little pieces that we're going to start and then we'll continue to work through the whole list to make sure that we can do as much as possible.
Well, even the transitioning, so our preschoolers who we, we already know have some challenging behaviors and then having their teacher they had in preschool be able to support that kindergarten classroom, that came from the listening.
Yep.
Sessions, you know? So, there were, there were several things like that, that, that the mental health first aid, some folks talked about that, particularly paras because several of our paras have had it when they came here. So, that, that came through there.
I think too, the interesting thing was that there were things that we thought we were going to hear and, and we heard that, but there was so much more. I mean, the, they were, they were really fantastic listening sessions. The people that were involved, like put it all out there and shared what their heart is. And so, there were things that came up that we weren't really expecting. So, that's not even, that wasn't on our radar at that, radar at that time. And now, we know and we can hopefully do some more about it.
Thank you.
And I think what's great too, like you said, this is the beginning. So, I mean, we have a start and I think that's really important and I like that you've listed the priority action staff. So, we're on our way. Thank you so much.
I think the collaboration has been really good too. Like that has helped it come through strong.
Yes.
Newborns stacks.
Yeah, we do. Those, that's what we need to do.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Last on our agenda this evening is a motion for a closed session evaluation. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
A roll call, please.
Director Merschbach?
Aye.
Director Garlock?
Aye.
Director Tominski?
Aye.
Director Anhold?
Aye.
Director Fordstein?
Aye.
President Humble's.
I'd like to remind folks to take a copy of their school calendar and at this time, the board stands adjourned and we'll meet in a closed session for evaluation pursuant of Iowa code. And to remind the board too, to fill out your meeting evaluations.